Ready to go. Call me order, rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic which stands alone nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem, Tim Rowan.
Here.
House members, Richard Furman.
Here.
Rick Scordano.
Here. Do you hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, do you hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass three zero. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I have a question on the consent agenda.
Do you want to pull something out or?
Well, I guess if it, my question is regarding the quote from Hildy, Inc. for the St. Francis fire. Is that in order to determine if we are, if they're able to increase their amount of money?
No.
Go ahead.
This is to actually comply with the asking we have to do to bring their information into our financial statements this time of year.
Have we not, we've done that before?
No, this is a brand new statement that we have to comply with.
And then is this, would this be different if they were in para?
Um, I'm not sure how it would change for para. If they were in para, I think we'd then not have to do the actual rule because we get the numbers straight from para.
Okay, so until they're in para, this is what we'd have to do.
Yeah, and there's, there's a on-year and an off-year.
Yep.
So the on-year is 2,200 and the off-year is 1,000.
So they would have to, if in order to not do this, this is required by end of the year?
Yeah.
So they'd have to.
To put into our 2015 financial statement.
Okay, okay, that's all. If I'm leaving it in.
Do you hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passed three zero. Meeting open to public. Did anybody sign up tonight?
Yes, we do. The first one is Jane Carpe.
Okay. Name and address and name.
My name is Jane Carpe. My address is 24069 Boulevard of St. Francis, Minnesota. 55070. Okay. I'm requesting a stay of a potential additional assessment on our home for non-renewable exterior. It is our full intent to be able to get the brown going on by the end of the year. I'll step up. We've been fined another $2,000 in addition to a $4,600 fine that was assessed to our house. And we would like to use that money to finish up.
Is there any, anything else taken under advisement?
Do you have any questions? Ask your wife.
Um, no, not really.
Yeah, yeah, why I did put them? When we did heart, we had the absolutely mass that we could afford. The city of St. Francis went ahead and put a new dancer house, which has cost us almost $400 at the moment. And the, um, that we did have on our homeowners was the, what we could afford. 2007 is when the economy began to fall for us and assets were a lot of people. We have our come off of our place right now. I'd say half, at least half of the kids are not charged or paying less of any of the kids that we work with in healing divorces from the St. Francis area. We only have one that's paying. Everyone else is street charged or very, very reduced, like 10% of what they charge. And it's just been real hard to get that down our feet yet. But we are getting that down our feet. Any other questions?
No.
No need. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Next person I know fully she's here, um, Gianna Laubach. It's regarding meet and greet. I think she might have spoke to you before the meeting.
Yes.
Um, next person is Steve Felton.
Okay.
Steve Felton, 2276, Pappy Street Northwest. Um, I talked to Joe Coman last week and he told me he was working with the Public Works Director on creating a digital traffic sign that would not only show speed or traffic, but also do a traffic count. But he let me know that this may not be done until springtime. So what I'm going to ask of the council is, has a traffic, has a traffic count ever been done on Pappy Street? Anybody's knowledge? Can we find that out? And then number two, until the Public Works Department gets such a device, does the city have the ability to do a traffic count now? Okay, I mean, I've driven by, you know, I'm sure you guys too, down the road where you see a black hose across the road to a box and that's for traffic counting. Do we have access to something like that or can, or do we have one that we can use that now to get a traffic count that's free? The reason I bring this up is the amount of traffic on Pappy Street is more than what a residential street was designed for and it's getting worse. The volume of traffic comes from high school students and buses, but mostly from true traffic using the shortcut, shortcut to Bridge Street because of the stoplight. If a traffic count is done, I'm sure you will see what I and other residents already know, there's just too much traffic on that street. I mean, I was all cut my lawn a couple of days ago and I mean, they're coming down with a bunch of the two, three, four cars in those time trains that are set before between seven, seven thirty, two thirty, three thirty, mostly from four to seven. Right, am I understanding right? Hopefully the Ronne House will do some good towards helping solve this problem. But in the meantime, I think doing a traffic count now along with added police presence, the initial purchase of a digital traffic sign will help. At least I hope so. With the high volume of traffic and the fact that some of these vehicles, those vehicles are going both at speeds over thirty, I believe that it's just a matter of time before an accident will happen. And that's my biggest concern right now. I actually, we don't have, we don't have sidewalks with curbs farther down when you're going towards a Lake George Boulevard, you'll see, you know, like I'm towards a, I think it's old road, I think it is, on their side of the street, as you come around the curb down there, you'll see streets, you know, sidewalk with the curves. We don't have that at front of my house. Mostly it's just, you know, grass all the way up to the street. So you're seeing, yesterday I was watching something, the locker, the locker's child with the dog on the street. He had a pull or because a car was coming down the cars, so we see that, you know, he didn't give a heel to the residents, you know, so they just, instead of going around, they were just right on his butt. So I'm just thinking about, you know, we had a sidewalk, we'd do a little different, but we don't have that. So I guess what I'm asking for is, can we do a traffic count before we get this digital sign? Just so you'll see the amount of traffic that we know is already going down this road. I think you'll be as amazed as we are. Is that possible? Any knowledge?
You can look into that and see how it can do.
Can look into it.
I think that will help the police too, I mean, if you know the lines as well. But your presence is a big deal too, you know, I'm part, I, I saw on Friday, by the way, about ten, nine, between nine and seven o'clock at night, I did see a police officer tag someone down the road. But mostly four to seven of the true traffic is the real problem. So I just want to keep your attention until something's done. And I hope, again, I hope the Ronne House will be of help to it. At least, you know, in theory, they work as long as everybody's working together on those things. So I guess that's a matter of knowing how to work with the Ronne House. But I'm just hoping that between that and the get police presence and this digital sign that will do both the traffic and the speed, I, you know, hope it will reach some help change some kind of way to drive around this street, maybe go up there for all of us and say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Petitions, requests and applications. We have for us a general obligation bond, series two fifteen A, resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-nine. Do you hear any motions on that? Or would you like to talk about a little bit?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the council, if you'd like, I could overview, I handed out a packet that I could just give you the
Okay.
financing details on it. And I won't give you too long, but certainly just hit the highlights and answer any questions. I was at your September twenty-first meeting, talked about the two different bonds. One, on the cover, there's the nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar general obligation bond. That's the bond for Carey Street and Bridge Street. Then the other, the temporary bond, as we discussed, is for the wastewater treatment plant. And the expectation is approximately a year from now or less than a year. The state of Minnesota will provide their financing that will be the source of payoff for this finance. And so, Mayor, what I wanted to do is, if I could actually have you open up that to page two, is just kind of give you a couple of highlights. In particular, at the bottom of that first page, where it says bond rating highlights. And I want to give you also kudos on this because, please note the first bullet point. Standard and Coors, who is one of the two firms that does a lot of ratings for these and how these in Minnesota. They have rated the city of St. Francis. They raised your bond rating from a double A minus to a double A, so they went one notch on the rating scale. And the highlights of why they did that are noted below, strong management with good financial policies and practices was one that was strongly noted. Second, strong budgetary performance with an operating surplus in the general fund. And third, very strong budgetary flexibility with high available bond balances. So those were three of the key criteria that they, they noted when they did the review with the city. Your city administrator and city finance director and I were on a rating call with Standard and Coors. And that was certainly something that, that that review along with your good performance as noted led to that rating upgrade. So, and as I've said to you numerous times in the past, that the higher you are on the rating scale, if you will, the lower your moral money is. So that all worked together to provide good bond sale results today. And so, not to go into too much detail here, but the, the average interest rate on the Carey and Bridge Street project, and this is on page seven, council, I I will just note a couple of items here. It says on the top, exhibit E file pricing summary for the two thousand fifteen A bonds. Please note in the middle, there's a, there's two columns. One says the coupon, one says the yield. The yield, that's the, the approximate yield, that's the market, if you will, for a double A rated general obligation bond. Investors will pay a premium to earn at that higher rate. So the coupon is the rate that the city will pay interest at. And the yield is the market. So what investors do is they pay a premium, in this case, it's about seventeen thousand dollars that they're paying to earn at a higher rate of return. That comes in as revenue to the city, so what we've done is downsized your bond issue accordingly. So I, I like to equate it to, the, the city is now paying at a higher rate of interest on the bonds, but you're now borrowing less money. So it, in a sense, works as a push. So that's the two thousand fifteen A bonds. The average interest rate that you're borrowing money at is about two and three quarters percent. Uh, this bond issue is, like I noted earlier, Carey and Bridge Street. The Carey Street portion is paid approximately forty percent by special assessments of the balance on taxes. And the Bridge Street portion is entirely sewer related. And if I could actually direct you into the very last page. This is page ten. Uh, this is the temporary bonds for the wastewater treatment plant. And again, as we talked about last time, the PFA is saying delay getting their money until spring in the hope that there's additional grand dollars to the city. So put some short-term financing in place and that's what this is doing. Similar to my last discussion about the other bonds, there's some premium in this. The yield is point three percent and the city will pay at one percent. So there's fifty-six thousand dollars of premium in this, so we'll downsize by that. And then there's less compensation that we're working for because it's such a short-term obligation. So we were able to reduce the overall borrowing amount on this one, the principal amount by seventy-five thousand dollars. And again, very, very favorable interest rate on this. It's one-year obligation. The city can prepay or refinance anytime after six months. So the hope would be that the PFA, the Public Facilities Authority, would provide their money late spring, early summer, so that you could retire this obligation and convert to that potential thirty-year home term. So, um, so Mayor, member of the city council, this is a quick highlight of those two bonds. Uh, tonight, there's two resolutions, one for each financing. The city will be locking in the interest rates that we just reviewed here. The funds will be available to the city November second. So, Mayor, members of the council, any questions that I can address for you?
Do you think we have any questions?
I think I do.
Okay, entertain a motion to, for resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-nine.
I'll make a motion of your adopt.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three zero. Now, the next one, which is for the sewer revenue bonds, the two thousand fifteen dash fifty, do I hear a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Do you hear a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three zero. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next before us, as soon as I can scroll through it here, we have a resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifty-one. Do we, uh, have a motion to accept that resolution?
Okay, let me back up. Variance request?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know if there is any. I guess I don't have any questions on the planning of zoning commission. I think what they came back with as a recommendation was pretty cut and dry. Um, I guess, we have any questions? Nate's here, but I think it was pretty straightforward. The applicants did leave me a message last week with some questions that I don't have the answer to. And I apologize for not getting back to you. I think that's going to be a question for Nate, as we come up with, you guys come up with a proposal, how you want to go forward. But your particular question, I, I don't know if I have an answer to. I know we dealt with it on a different CUP, but I think for different reasons a few years ago. But I think it's a question I'll have to ask Nate. I guess for me, I think the subject is pretty cut and dry, so I would make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Okay, do I hear a second?
The motion is to, the, the motion in question is denying your variance.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on it? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass three zero. Next before us, we have Patriot Lanes dance permit for two thousand sixteen Pioneer Days. And is this in the form of resolution or just?
That would be just a motion. They did imply, we did talk to the police chief, Jeff Arapet, regarding requirements that may change next year, but that's going to probably come back in an ordinance form of security. We talked about the time of their dance with them. They've been in cooperation, working with us. It'll be reviewed again before Pioneer Days, just refresh the memory.
If we approve this now, would they be grandfathered in or subsequent change as we move forward? Uh, I'll make the motion to approve it for the two thousand sixteen Pioneer Days with provision in there for changing as we're closer to that date. Does that sound reasonable? Scott? Okay. Anybody have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I ask the chief, do the, are the officers, they said there's additional officers for this? Are those overtime paid or the city paid for those? Do you know?
Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Mr. Furman, currently, what it is by ordinance, they're required to have a police presence there that affects additional security. They are paid for, they receive overtime pay that is reimbursed to the city by distance.
Okay.
That's the way it is currently.
Okay, that's what I figured it was. And then do we have, has there been a large amount of calls for this in the last year or two? To additional officers who aren't being paid overtime to be there?
At this one particular?
Yes.
It has been required by them to have it through the works every time that they have a dance that they have a police presence there.
But we're not going to have, are other officers who are working the road are not being burdened by this one particular place?
We, over the last couple of years, I guess we have had situations where even with the officers inside, that we have had some of the officers that work in the street also have home assistance.
Okay.
With situations.
Okay. That's all I got. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I guess it was, is part of the change in the ordinance, I guess I don't know what the future holds, but is it to acquire more officers to be present there or can we do that?
Actually, the, um, we'll, we'll come back with a report and findings on why the police feel that the ordinance should be changed.
Okay.
Have done some questionnaires throughout the surrounding communities and called the candle and answers what their hours are, and we'll be bringing that forward.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pass three zero. Now we, ordinances and resolutions. Okay, we have a resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifty-two requesting Noka County HRA funds for YMCA market study. Do I hear any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now we're moving down to reports from consults and staff members, and it looks like our attorney's up.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, council, thank you. You've got a memo and a fairly extensive sixty-one page document related to data practices, which is something that needed to come about because of recent amendments to the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. Without going into detail on all sixty-one pages, basically, the city is required to create new procedures to ensure the protection of data that's created, stored, maintained by the city officials in executing their job responsibilities, also to outline procedures that need to be followed in the event of data use along with forms. So happy to answer any specific questions you have on it, but basically it's needed to comply with our data practice statutory revisions. And a lot of this has been liberally borrowed from other cities. So we've got some that have been in place for a while. It seems, it seems like it works well, so with that, I'd recommend the change.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifty-three.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass three zero. And next for staff, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, council, in your packet today, we have our agenda memo requesting a purchase of a replacement deck for our Bellows multi-use piece of equipment. Do you entertain any questions that can be asked? This deck is the original deck that came on the chain in two thousand. Looking to replace it with a Coro deck. It's going to be a little bit smaller. Hopefully a little bit more meaningful in our park. And hopefully it'll last us the rest of the life of the machine.
Anybody have any questions? I do have one question. What are we expecting for the life of that machine?
Uh, we, we put it in a fifteen year, so twenty twenty-three is when we expect to replace the machine.
So if things work out well, we should wear it together then.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're just looking for a motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion to approve. I have more deck. Do you need a second?
I would second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Received the agenda report, Spiller A team, radar message. Does somebody, or were quite a while back. Does some of you are aware, quite a while back, we...quite a while back, well, fifteen years ago, we purchased the one sign that we did have. It was a basic, again, their basic model, kind of like... Kind of like this one. It cost us, the price of that unit at the time was approximately four thousand dollars, plus a month, a little bit. It has well exceeded its useful life. I give Public Works a lot of credit for trying to, to help us keep that thing going. Batteries, did you swallow batteries? Like you haven't seen before. Uh, and then for some reason, it's consuming electricity even when it's turned off. We don't get readout sometimes. The ability to gather information like you could when it was new passed probably six years ago. So it was pretty much just a display sign that would tell you how fast you're going and flash if you're going too fast. We recently looked back into the same company, so you know, we have such good luck. Like, when I talked to the representatives from the company, she was wasn't sure the last time she had heard of the unit lasted that long. Took the life on these, our seven, eight years. So it, it, it longs, it's fast. We went back to the same company just because the big companies pretty much control the economy. And they show them how they're doing. There's not a lot of competition out there for it. But we try to look at it from not just a police aspect. Mr. Feldman makes a point about the traffic speeds and volumes, uh, you know? And, and I'm not saying that he's wrong, because he's not. Traffic has increased. But it's increased on Arrowhead, Bridge Street, Kerry Street, Rememberable, we're popping, Ambassador Boulevard, Pedersen, Two Thirty-Fifth. The big ones, it's popping in your head right away. Now, it has to do with traffic getting back in town, has to do with traffic getting out of developments. So there are issues, and there are people that on occasion bring it to a point. They maybe haven't brought it up as much as Mr. Feldman, but they bring it up to us out of the police department that we can sure use some help out there. The difficulty's coming from the policing force side is that although we have their officers working at that time, two of them are contracted in school. So again, the three busiest times of the day, for school, after school, and rush hour. I'm not saying if you try to get across Highway Forty-seventh, twenty-four o'clock and seven o'clock at night, that's just not the only spot traffic's at. It's like that through the city. Is it a problem? Yeah, it's a problem. Is it going fast? Sometimes there, sometimes there. This will answer a lot of that question. The advantage with this unit is it also can be used, uh, as the council is aware of the past, uh, when we've asked for a speed study from the state, we, we typically don't have satisfied citizens because speed limits go up. Thirty-three years, I've never seen one go down. Every speed stone I actually execute in the city of St. Francis, the speeds have gone up. Maybe by five miles an hour, maybe by ten, but I've never seen one go down. I think the advantage, one advantage for this is, just like Mr. Feldman was asking, is let's get a speed study. We currently don't have the equipment. This would be that good. This machine has the ability to count traffic, traffic numbers, speeds of traffic that are coming through, the times of the traffic. The data that you can squeeze out of this thing is...is amazing. The way that it's done is even better, is that Mr. Teicher or myself or whoever can sit at the computer at their office and talk to the machine and find out what data that's collected. And, and they'll come up and turn out, print out, and here's, here's the data that's collected. So if an individual comes here, the council meeting, and asks that, you know, I think there's a problem in my street, and we'd like to see how much traffic you guys don't realize it, and this is what's going on, and we'd like to see what there really is. Mr. Feldman is exactly correct. When I put, put an end to the conversation, this is what it is, this is how much traffic is, and this is what the speeds are. Some of it, just like Mr. Feldman points out, is inevitable. You know, and perfect example is this. I understand and sympathetic for the problem of our street. If I was a daily commuter, I'd be doing the same thing. I'd drive at speed. But I'd definitely be doing the same thing. Do I want to go fight a stop sign at nine or come to a stoplight? That I'm going to be able to get out instead of being twenty cars deep at a stop sign, hoping that I can get out. Wait for a green light to be able to pull up and go where I want to go. It only makes good sense to change it going down the street currently. I think that will change what, what the problem was, and they will. But this tool would give us the ability to give a citizen the answer. Look, we can't tell you today. And the hard people. And then we could use it everywhere, you know, not just public street, because there's other people that are curious too. Some areas that, that I think people would be surprised because I'm not saying that people aren't right, but at times, it's hard to judge traffic speed from the side. Uh, you know, and even trained guys can be a little bit deceived on how fast the traffic is going. So it'll gather that information for my, for the police side and for the city side of some of that. The other thing is that this board, we've kind of stepped up from the basic model. This is a little bit fancier model, and, uh, the reason we looked at that was because it has a whole lot more versatility. You can put this board up. It's eighteen inches by about eighteen or twenty inches wide. And you can program it as a small reader board. So, um, like when the city is having, uh, trying to identify a polling place, we, you could put it outside of the polling place that's flashing, you know, Poll Place or Vote Here or wherever you want. You could have it advertising for Pioneer Days. You could have it advertising for parade rallies. I had, uh, and all these messages can be changed from a mouse instead of having to walk physically to the sign like we used. The old sign, I keep changing, seven pounds, I think Paul's correct. I think he said this one, that forty-five. When you put the twelve-volt battery in it, trust me, I've put that thing up many times, and it's, it's, it's a chore. And a twelve-volt battery lasts a day. I was talking about it the other day, and the guy, someone that's been around for a while was laughing. He said, I remember when you made us on C shift, walk, change your battery every night. Yeah, because if I didn't, the battery died, and I think it lived twenty-four-hour stretch of what the speeds were. So they surpassed that with technology with now. It's, I believe it's like what was fifteen or eighteen pounds? I mean, it, it's almost enough. Battery life is four days, five days, depending on what you have assigned to one. Its abilities are just immense in my, my, the flexibility. You can put it out a mall behind one of the public rights to warn people of construction or a main or something. The uses aren't just for the speed. So I, I think it's a...I realize it's not inexpensive, but I, I think it's a good investment in what it is. On, on the agenda party, I did forget to put in, uh, came up with price of, total price of, um, the trade-in of five thousand, I'm sorry, six thousand three hundred ninety dollars. Should add five, five hundred dollars for an extra set of batteries, so that Public Works has been kind enough, even not only to give us hand placing that thing, but to also swap batteries out to make sure that, that it's working. And, uh, so we can have extra batteries, and like we've done with the old sign, is you just have a battery, take it out, put it in, instead of having to move and change things. And then, of course, a good old tax, so in the end, it'd be approximately seven thousand three hundred dollars for a unit, an extra set of batteries, and three extra morning brackets, which would be placed throughout the city. As the agenda said, it can be attached to any pole. Paul might have discussed it and talked about unit. There have been areas in the past that have been difficult to monitor because of lack of signage. We talked that if we get this unit, that we probably put some signs up or poles up in strategic locations that we want to kind of keep an eye on. If you have any questions, come on.
I got a couple. How easy is it to move around?
This sign, the, the sign is really easy to move around. It's really wool, because the biggest part is that's part of the reason that in there, you'll see three extra morning brackets. That way you can put morning brackets wherever you want and unclip it, take it, the next one, clip it on, but of course it's secure down there, so you can walk away with it. Because it is the life.
That was my next question, security. Now, if it talks to you at your office, will it tell you, hey, someone's messing around with me?
Not that smart.
Okay.
No, and, you know, I'm not gonna...I think, we hope that everybody here knows it, but I'm kind of blunt and straight with stuff like this. And these signs, you've seen the trailers and stuff like that. These signs are a great tool utilized by a lot of people. Unfortunately, some people do vent their frustration. That is why you notice out there too, that there's an insurance form that so that if they are damaged, you buy Sandy had a baseball bat, take another one. I think Ramsey had a beer bottle, take one out. You know? A police, piece of police equipment is not exempt from bankruptcy, unfortunately. But the advantage is that some of that cost is for theft and damage and insurance, so that they will, if not completely replace, help, help and reduce costs greatly to try to keep the sign working.
Um, if we were to authorize it today, when's it coming?
I didn't. Quick, I'm sure.
Okay.
So I, I can, you know, the gal was pretty, uh, anxious to hear back from you when I talked to her. I might have been a little bold and said, I'm pretty sure this is gonna fly. She said, well, you know. So I told her I'd be calling her Tuesday morning later with what was going on, so.
Last question I have is how we're gonna pay for it. Any ideas?
We may be able to find some excess cash in the capital, capital equipment fund, um, since we're gonna have a rolling cash balance in there from here on out. They could absorb a purchase like this.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I think you answered one of my questions. The, the kind of machine we're getting, it's other, other people around here have experience with that machine, and it, it...
All Traffic Solutions is is well-known throughout this area. Why, I know Wyoming PD has a couple, three of them, I think. I'm not sure if I, I standing, the city continues to purchase them. Almost everything that I know, every traffic sign I am aware of in there is that made by All Traffic Solutions. Maybe not this model. This is a newer one. It's all LED, which helps with batteries.
Okay. And my second question is, then what would we have to do six or seven years from now and not have to find money to, to buy the replacement? Is this something that needs to be planned for? Because I think it's a very, very good idea. I think we need this tool, but I don't want to have this conversation six years from now, seven years from now. I think we ought to figure out a way to keep a tool like this in the inventory.
Councilman Swirle, I think the answer to that would be real simple is that from conversations I've had with, with Paul, Public Works and myself, although one sign is, is right now that we need a sign, you know, I'm not here asking because I think it'd be fun. Right now, we need this sign. I can see where more than one sign would definitely be nice to have. And I think it's something that from budget time, we can work with, uh, with our city administrator and get it put into our
Capital Equipment Fund.
Yeah. So that it's on a replacement schedule, just like the other equipment. And, and also at the same time, start looking at maybe getting another one in the budget so that we can have a couple of these signs that are usable throughout this.
Okay. Outstanding. I like that answer. That's all I have.
Um, I'll make a motion, motion to approve this purchase.
A second.
Any further discussion?
I just think this is a great idea. I think it'll save, I think it'll save lives, slow people down, and help with that, help traffic in the city.
I think I was on board with the first antique sign we own now. I wanted it pretty bad, so I'm in favor of it, so. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Council. Just as a little side note, I know this is nothing on your, nothing on your, the general report. I just wanted to make some of you aware that may not be aware that if you see these maroon cars down by the police department, we've, uh... I'm tickled pink to say that we were approached by the State Patrol and asked if they could possibly use some office space in our, our building as a substation. Just a little history on this. I think it was in the early nineties. I tried really hard to get the State Patrol to have a substation in our police department, and it was unsuccessful. So when I was approached with the idea here not too long ago, I was tickled pink to hear them have an interest in it. The cost of the city? There is no cost to the city. The building's the building, and it's, they're sharing this space with our reserves. They have an office they can make phone calls from, do some paperwork, use the facilities, use the restrooms, use the lunchroom. And in return, the advantage to us is that we have higher law enforcement presence in our community. Someone can tell me probably who's on that one.
That's great. Me too. I think that's great.
Well, I just wanted the council to wear that in case they start seeing the maroon cars and wondering what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have reports from council members. I guess I'll go first. Officer Sergeant Railings Benefit went real well. There was a huge turnout. I'm really pleased to see that. It shows how everyone chips in when something's needed around St. Francis, and very proud of our community for doing that. Um, last night I was at the fire department meeting, and they've got several things coming up. They got their, uh, this Saturday, their Fire Prevention Open House Pancake Breakfast. That's eight o'clock till noon, I believe. Uh, they should be having their new truck come in this week sometime, which is gonna be a nice thing to have. We have some people graduate Fire Academy this month, which is good new firefighters, and, uh, we also, they're working on this Heart Safe Community, which we had been talking about for the last couple of months, so that's moving along very well. And, uh, the last thing I have is, I know it's one of our local businesses, a dental office, put up a really nice sign thanking our police department and our fire department for what they do, and I thought that was really, really nice and private business to do that. I don't know if anyone's ever seen that sign, but it's really nice to do that, so I just wanted to thank them. That's all I have. Um, you... You're next.
Okay. I just want to echo the, the comments about the benefit. I that was the first time I've been to like an event like that. It was a community event in this part of the world, and I saw people there. I've, I've never met the gals that worked at the county market, but I see them every Saturday. Sure enough, I see about three or four of them there. Don't know the names, but it was, it was quite an event. I I think Jake in his, when he gave his little speech, he mentioned something about this is what small towns do, and he hit a nail right on the head. We're, I think we always will be kind of a small town. We kind of struggle with how we want to grow, but this is a unique part of the world, and I think we I don't think we ever want to lose that character. But I think that, uh, all those who put that on for a sergeant, they did a phenomenal job. Uh, I think that's all I have.
I echo the same thing. I'm glad it was a fantastic turnout. I saw, I remember the council there and lots of city staff, so a lot of support all around. Um, and then, uh, I had something I forgot. I got nothing else.
Okay. Report from the mayor. He hasn't got anything tonight. Uh, do I hear any old business? Okay, do we have any new business? Not hearing any? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned.